I'd like to call the April 12, 2018 Peters Township Planning Commission meeting in order. Ed Rohkamp, please.
Conrad Selepus will not be here tonight. Mr. Verlato.
President.
Mr. Magrino.
Yep.
Mr. Mills.
Here.
Mr. Smith.
There.
Mr. Wiley.
Here.
Mr. Carteles.
Here.
Can I get a motion to approve the March 14, 2018 regular meeting minutes?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor of saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
And any reports and correspondence?
None of note.
Site plan, subdivision, site review?
None here in April, which is a good thing.
Any changes to the agenda?
No.
Any audience comments on items not on the agenda? Okay, we want to do business. The planning commission preview, the Waters of McBurney project, Friar Lane Valley Brook Road.
Something I'm going to try to do here more in 2018 with some new style projects coming before we put plans on the agenda for you to act on and make decisions and recommendations, give you an opportunity, give planning commission an opportunity to look at them and hear a presentation from a developer, give them some input before we put it on their agenda for a final plan. So, tonight, we have the Waters Senior Living Holdings LLC. They have the property at Friar Lane in Valley Brook Road under agreement to purchase. Planning commission and council approved additional use approval for this development in 2017 with 14 conditions, and the site plan that they're proposing needs to comply with all 14 of those conditions. This property's zone town center. They're showing us on the plan that they submitted that they can meet all the setbacks for the building, they can meet setbacks for the town center eligibility for four stories. They're showing us that they can meet parking. They have submitted to the township engineer geotechnical reports, stormwater management reports. Our township staff, engineers, fire department, sanitary authority are all reviewing these plans. And before we put it on your agenda, we want you, planning commission, to have an opportunity to hear from the developer on what exactly they're proposing, and then hopefully have this on in May for a planning commission recommendation. So, we're not taking any action tonight, we're just here to see their proposed development and give them input on their proposed plan.
Great. We have somebody from the developer.
Good evening. My name is Paul Mayner of the Waters Senior Living, and thank you very much for taking the time to review our plan, as Ed said, in anticipation hopefully of being in front of you in about a month. What we'd like to do this evening, and I'm here this evening with our civil engineer grant hiring of PVE engineers, what we'd like to do is walk you through the plans as we've submitted them to you, try to articulate some of the technical specifications and how we comply with those, and then frankly, open it up for questions. And so, we're hoping to make this a dialogue with you so that we can help you understand what we're trying to do. So with that, I will turn it over to Grant, who can walk you through our presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everybody.
Hello.
We've been before the planning commission multiple times, so I want to just really kind of hit on some of the key design elements here. You guys have really heard the story and the history of this development, so I'd like to just zoom into some of the details of the plan. The site here is highlighted, this is Valley Brook and then Friar Lane. Overall, the site is 3.72 acres in size, it's currently wooded, and it slopes from a high point along St. Benedict's to the low point on Valley Brook Road. The site, like I said, is 3.72 acres in size. The permitted density is one floor ratio. What that equates to is we're permitted basically 162,000 square feet of building, we are proposing 140,000 square feet, so we're roughly a .8 FAR. There are, this will be a senior care facility with primary, or personal care and independent living. There will be a total of 124 units. By December, we received our conditional use approval. The actual site plan has been updated slightly based on some comments and decisions from council, the primary one being that we are going to be dedicating a portion of right-of-way along Valley Brook Road for potential improvements, future improvements to Valley Brook Road. So we've been adjusting the building slightly, but we still comply with the setbacks for the four-story requirements. From a low-density residential district, a fourth story is required to be 150 feet from that, we are 366 feet. Just to clarify, this darker blue is the fourth floor, the lighter blue is the third and second stories. From a medium-density overlay district, which is St. Benedict's, we're required to be 75 feet, we are at 83. From Valley Brook Road and from Friar Lane, we are required to be 50 feet. Along Valley Brook, we are 58. Along Friar, we are 118. The fourth floor also has to be setback from the third story. From both Friar Lane and Valley Brook, we have to be 20 feet. On Valley Brook, we're at 34 and 1/2, and along Friar Lane, we're at 66. So we are complying with the conditional use requirements for four stories. The area highlighted in blue on the screen, this is the area that we're going to be dedicating as future right-of-way, and our setbacks are being measured off of that new line. So right now, our setback off the newly dedicated right-of-way is 20 feet from Valley Brook. We are 50 feet from Friar Lane. Now, the Waters and council have come to an agreement, the council, or Waters is contributing funds for their portion of the improvements and also dedicating this right-of-way. The site, the building's going to be accessed from Friar Lane.
Can I ask you one sec?
Yes.
Does the area to be dedicated in any way impact, I don't think it does, the sidewalk?
No, and I'll get on that.
I'm sorry.
No, no problem, no problem. So the site will be accessed from Friar Lane. As you come in, there will be a loading space on the left side, surface parking, there will be a drop-off area for our primary entrance, and then as you continue through the parking area, you'll come down a ramp which will then access into underground parking. There are 86 underground parking spaces, there are 45 surface parking. So we have a total of 131, and we are required 65. So enough parking. Can I hear you? Good? Okay. Thought I heard you about to say something. Landscaping, there is a required buffer, the type B buffer, which is 15 feet along St. Benedict's, which is shown here. We also do have landscaping within the parking area, those will be deciduous trees. Along Friar Lane, in discussions at the council meeting, it was determined that the existing pine trees really aren't in that good a shape along Friar Lane, so we're going to take those down and then install new trees along that side of the street. There will be a monument-style sign located at the corner, and some decorative landscaping there as well. In this area here, we're trying to create a buffer for the entrance to the garage, our dumpster will also be located here, and then at the current time, we're proposing to have our mechanical equipment here as well. So there will be a mound there, and then there will be landscaping as well. Also, part of our landscape package would be what is included within the courtyard that's along Valley Brook, and I'll hit on that more here in a second.
Grant, do you envision the dumpster being large enough to handle that size? I mean, is that just going to be one dumpster, is it going to be multiple?
It would be multiple.
That's right.
So right, as it currently functions, the dumpsters are located inside the building.
Okay.
They're in the parking area. They will then be rolled out for pickup, dump truck will come down, turn around, go back through, and then these dumpsters will actually be taken back inside.
Yeah, if there's kind of.
So really, what this is, is just a pad for them to store for a day before the dump truck comes.
Gotcha.
Or it's garbage truck, sorry.
One other thing, just what we're talking about, is there any access for especially a lot of these seniors to get to the church easily? Get on that too.
Yep. Two more, I think it's two more slides. I'm just going to highlight that there's a wall here, it's going to be a six-foot wall to pick up grade. And then here is the sidewalks highlighted. So right now, there's a sidewalk along Valley Brook, courtyard, coming up Friar Lane, these are access to the building, access at the primary entrance and drop-off area, a connection across to Mortland. Right now, we know that a sidewalk's going to be required here. If we do grade that in, it's basically going to go to a wall, it's steep there, so what we're thinking, and I haven't discussed this with Ed yet, is we can show a portion of that sidewalk, show an easement, whatever it might be, so that whatever time St. Benedict's would install their sidewalk, that grading can occur that would facilitate that.
Yeah, I can get a couple off.
We actually, we tried to show it on the plans and grade it in, it just, it stopped, so we'd have to grade on the St. Benedict's, which maybe that's a conversation we have, and we work that out.
Well, there's access to St. Benedict's for Mortlands, so as long as.
Is it?
Yes.
Yeah.
There's steps.
Were steps up in there?
So if we can get them to Mortlands, that gives them an easy way to get to the event.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
The sidewalk on the, is it the eastern side? Does that connect up to the, is there a parking lot right there? Is that the?
Yeah, there's, we would have, we would have stairs that would come up here, comes to a level area, and then it comes down into their parking, their parking lot.
Okay. I just couldn't recall if there was a walkway in there or just in the parking lot. I feel.
It's a walkway, the edge of the parking lot is about here, and so that does come down in. I think on our existing conditions plan, you can see it clearly.
Did you talk about the width of the sidewalks? I noticed Valley Brook, the width is wider.
Valley Brook is proposed for eight feet, everywhere else is proposed for five, per the ordinance.
Are those entrances on the side of the building along Friar? Those are into the building, right? Not into the parking structure?
Into the building, correct. Yes, all access that you see here would be into the building, there is one man door down here that would go garage.
Question, regarding the parking spaces under the garage, is that one per unit, one car per unit? Are they going to have assigned spaces to park in, or is it kind of a free-for-all?
I believe there will be assigned spaces for tenants.
We rent those out as part of the independent living arrangement. The fact of the matter is, it's, not everyone rents a stall, so we typically have stalls left over, which in many instances is how we accommodate our employees as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Ken?
I had one more thing about the sidewalk. If you, if you go from there into Mortlands, and you have to deal with steps regardless coming out of there to get to St. Ben's, would that be the case?
There are steps up, and then honestly, I'm not sure if there are additional steps that go to the church.
I think there are.
Okay.
There are steps that go from Mortlands up to St. Ben's, but there are steps. You know, we'll have to look at that sidewalk along Friar a little closer.
Yeah, I'm just thinking possible wheelchairs and what.
Right. Yeah, if there's a way to grade, you know, if there's a way to be a ramp over there instead of dealing with steps.
We'll look at that.
I'd be surprised St. Ben's wouldn't be willing to work with you.
And connect it all the way to the parking lot.
We can look at both of those points on the left and right, and then speak to St. Benedict's.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, the courtyard area, courtyard area along Valley Brook, it's roughly 5,000 square feet. What we are thinking is that coming off of the sidewalk, you would have a main entrance, there would be an eight-foot wide set of steps, and that would help define this access point here. On the left side, what we would do is some landscaping, some planners, and then an outdoor seating area that would help facilitate the dining area, as well as a coffee shop that would be located here. There will also be a ADA ramp in this location. On the right side, same thing, we would mirror the landscaping, but we would have more of an intimate seating area with some benching. There is a wellness center, a salon, and then a therapy center, so that seating would help facilitate those uses there. The two images above are examples of other Waters installations, so that's an example of the theme and the vision we're going for in those spaces, in that space.
Is that ramp shown on here?
No, it is not. So when we submitted the site plan, we were still working through what our concept would be for that plaza space, and we did show a general image on the site plan and on the rendering, so that will be updated. We are still working through the details of this as well, but at some point, you will see the final. Stormwater for the site, there are three underground stormwater management facilities. The first one is in the parking area, the second is at the garage entrance, and the third is a single underground pipe. This pipe is helping to manage the stormwater along Friar. This facility is managing the parking area, as well as a portion of the roof. This facility is managing the right side of the building, the drive down to the parking garage, and then a portion of the roof as well. That will connect into an existing inlet that's on Valley Brook Road. We are working with PennDOT to make that connection, so we will have to apply for an HOP with PennDOT for that connection.
Township will be the applicant.
Township will be the applicant.
And that, over there by the garage entrance, that'll be load-worthy to take fire trucks and the trash trucks and stuff?
Yes. Sanitary, if you can see, it's a very small run in the lower-left corner of the building. There's an existing, there's an existing sanitary line here. We have received our planning module exemption, they are just reviewing the plan, which is one pipe and one structure.
Made money on that deal.
This is the rendering of the building. As you can see, we really tried to create an interesting aesthetic, something that would work for the community. Changing in materials, articulations, reliefs, transparency in the windows, color choices, something that's going to catch your eye as you're driving in and really create that gateway effect that the township's looking for in the McBurney Town Center. This is the view from the entrance in St. Benedict's, same thing, trying to create architectural interest with elevation changes in the building, changes in the facade with the reliefs. There are balconies here so that the front facade also becomes active if there's people out relaxing on those, on those balconies. The last image is a bird's eye of the facility, so you get to see how it sits along Valley Brook and Friar Lane, and how it will look adjacent to existing residential and then also commercial. So with that, I can answer any questions. One other thing that I forgot to note is that we have submitted for our NPDES with the county, and we are going through the expedited review process now.
Grant, I have a question. The wooded area between Mortlands and the office, doctor's office slash office, you're not purchasing that area, is this the different owner?
The property line's roughly here. So there's, I believe that he does, yes.
Okay. Okay. So there's going to be some type of, is it going to go sort of through the, what's to get to Mortlands access?
No, I think this needs to be scaled up slightly here, because this, this is sidewalk, it would connect there, yeah.
Okay.
It's a nice view though.
Yeah, that helps.
Yeah, that really brings it together.
Operation, what's the intent of the restaurant, coffee shop, and salon? Is that?
It will service strictly the residents.
And guests.
And guests, correct.
So it's not open retail?
Correct.
So we can restrict that?
We can, but.
Well, I guess my thought is, is like, do we want additional traffic up there and whatnot if it was open to the public? Maybe treat it differently.
They'd be paying a higher traffic impact fee in this case. It's strictly for the residents and guests of the residents.
It's similar to Paramount, they have the same.
Yeah, that's what I figured, yeah, yeah.
Looks good.
What's the size, square foot difference between this and Paramount?
I don't know what Paramount's is.
About the same, or is this bigger? Because of the four stories.
What square foot is this?
140,000.
I don't even want to, I don't know the answer.
Probably one of the largest structures in Peters.
Could be, yes.
Thank God we reassess for you guys.
I was going to say, it was the high school.
So each one of these units have like their own, it's a completely individual living?
There's one bedrooms, two bedrooms, and studios. Speaking specifics with bathroom facilities and everything.
Sure, the independent living units, as Grant said, are a combination of one-bedroom and two-bedroom units. Those are fully equipped units with operational kitchens, as well as washers and dryers. Our personal care, memory care does not have kitchens, but they have a kitchenette, if you will, refrigerator and a sink, but no cooking opportunity in those units.
And those are all segregated in a specific area?
Correct. The memory care is the left wing, if you will, along Friar Lane of the H of the building as Grant's depicting right now, both levels of that. And that's a two-level portion of the building, meant for that purpose and function of the property.
And that, those rooms, I mean, just in case, because of proximity to major road, a lockdown and whatnot as far as some of those patients leaving?
It's a secure, it's a secure component to the building, that's correct.
And interior-wise, there's a security between that wing and other areas?
Correct.
Well?
Correct.
And is there, there's one main elevator shaft, like at the corner of that H on the right? Is that, or how do you, how do you have that set up?
Do you have a, I think we have, let me look at that. Two elevator cores in the property.
So right where that bar comes across the.
Essentially, correct.
Very much. One here, and then one here. And is there a restriction, is there a age threshold, or is it open all ages, or is it?
It is by default a community for senior living. From a licensing perspective, I'd have to check to see if we are required to make that as an age-restricted level.
I made a business earlier, with the capacity, I mean, if you were 100% occupied, how many folks?
So I've looked at that, in our other communities, our ratio is, if we're at 100%, we're probably 1.2 people per unit, so there's a higher proportion of single occupied units. We do have couples, of course, but the ponderance are individuals.
And all the units are wheelchair accessible and all that?
Yes. Be completely handicapped accessible.
You mentioned steps at the right corner of that H up there going into the parking lot area. Is there going to be a ramp for the seniors also to get down, or if they want to go to church, the ones that cannot use steps?
This one does not, it's just steps for now. It's just steps for now. There's roughly a, we have roughly a 12, 15-foot difference in elevation there.
Oh, so that's really that steep, okay.
So ramp?
Yeah, something has to happen.
We're looking at a very long ramp. I think that's something we have to, we'll look into the sides of one Friar Lane and there to really analyze what the best way is to make that connection better.
I think that's something that's important to consider, being able to.
I think we got to look hard at Friar.
Yeah, I was going to say, is the church planning to build, you talked to the church, are they planning to extend the sidewalk if this?
I have not talked to them, but if they probably be willing, then maybe consider that.
Well, you're talking about Friar, but that like triples the distance you'd have to go to get there, you know, I mean, you're.
There's so much elevation change, going over to St. Ben's and then from Mortlands up to St. Ben's, there's a big elevation change.
Yeah, Mortlands is still going to have steps. Mortlands is not going to have a ramp.
Even if they have a ramp.
To Mortlands, there's still steps from Mortlands.
Right, right, that's what I was.
And the churches, I don't know whose steps those are from Mortlands or the churches, but they're probably not going to change that.
Well, looking at this aerial, I'm just looking at, is there a way to come in and start the ramp in the middle of that H and start going across the lower end of that parking lot till you get, and I mean St. Ben's, you know, so that they can, try to work together with them. I mean, that's another 100 people that might want to go, that's why I'm saying that.
I think maybe Ed and I can go out there, walk around, see what we think, but at least for us, where the best point would be, maybe just make the ability for that.
We'd like to.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Access, you know, when you guys come back, just some options.
Yeah, I think you got to brainstorm that a little bit, that's all.
Maybe I missed it. Where's your AC units and?
Thanks, Dave. Right now, mechanical equipment's planned for.
And that's mostly a generator in that, in that location, and a backup generator and the electrical transformer. Each of our units are individually heated and cooled with their own heating packet. And any other rooftop equipment that we, or any other equipment that we need from a heating cooling perspective would be screened in on the roof.
So there is a, there is a parapet under its flat roof, and there is a parapet that would help disguise any of that.
So each, each unit, each living unit has its own mechanical space?
Correct.
What you're saying?
Mechanical closet and its own package unit.
Yeah, circuit panel.
Correct.
Hot water heater, all that stuff.
Correct.
Okay.
I'd be anxious, I guess the fire department's still reviewing it?
They are, preliminarily, with their new truck that they're getting, they're getting close to being comfortable with everything, so. I saw a couple drawings in here where they had like some pads.
We had a pre-application a month ago, roughly, where we sat down with the fire department and ran through all the measurements for them with the new truck, preliminarily, but then we also didn't provide those turnaround space on that unit.
It's a sprinkled, fully sprinkled building.
Those are, those are internal HVAC units, not PTAC units or anything pop with the walls?
Those are, there is a combination of PTAC and our other package unit that sits in a closet space, controlled by its own individual thermostat.
Okay. What type of materials are these exterior walls?
I believe they called out for is hardy.
There's a combination of stone, stone facade, as well as a cementitious siding, a hardy board, plus the brickwork.
So this, this is the brick material, brick veneer, and then these would be the hardy.
Cement inside.
Yeah. I believe we also have some stone accents at certain locations as well.
Maybe around the front entrance.
And the lintels are a stone application as well.
Is that area on the right a, like an outdoor area where folks can be outside on top of a roof there?
Correct.
Oh, yeah, that's.
So these, these areas here are rooftop decks.
And the one on the left is intended to be for a garden space for our memory care units, because we would like to create a distinct garden setting for that component of the building. But that is right off of the first level of the building, and then below that, then you transition into more of the common space, which then opens up out into the courtyard, which allows us to create the connection between the building and the sidewalk and to activate that element of the building as one of the goals in the conditional use permit and as part of the town center guidelines.
So I just noticed on this rendering here, this, on this corner here, it's really not going to be three stories over here, right? This is too many stories above?
So the, the lower level that you're seeing there is a portion of the parking garage that we have been able to create as part of the activation of that courtyard space. The two levels above the building are then consistent with the grade on the north side of the property.
Oh, I see. So this is actually the garage?
Part of, correct.
Part of that, yeah.
Correct.
So then if you, that, that area you're going to is here.
Oh, because of the topography coming down, okay.
Correct.
I got you.
Correct. And we really did a lot of pushing and pulling on the building to try to accommodate the topography of the site and to make sure that we fit within the setbacks, and we've, through Grant's work, we've maximized pretty much every square inch of the site in an efficient way.
Any other comments, questions?
No, I think it looks good. I just wanted to bring that up so that.
I just wanted to bring that out so that, you know, you can make it clear that that's the lower floor, because...
Do their plans include a garage plan?
They do.
Okay. That garage plan gives a good sense for how that flows.
So the biggest thing I'm hearing how it'll work for next time is...
The napkin to St. Ben's.
Yeah.
Anything else?
Thank you very much.
Audience comments?
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No audience comments in that area?
No audience comments? Meeting adjourned.